We are on the air.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular October meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear in the agenda. We will ask the appellant to come forward, be sworn in, have a seat, and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear about why they feel their appeal should be granted. Following that, we will ask them to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal, and following that, anyone who is in opposition to it. We request that, if all possible, the appellant can find their testimony to 10 minutes, and we request that those speaking from the floor, for and against, can find theirs to five minutes. After public testimony has been heard, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there's any, or the planning department, to see if there's any comments from their office. And then, if anything has been raised that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In the vast majority of cases, the board will act on each request prior to moving on to the next one. The first case this evening is case 0322, 2025. Automotive Supply Associates, Inc., and Jeffrey White, J E F K E L, Inc., DBA Gary's Fleet Services, request approval for a variance from Section 2824J, Table of Principal Uses, use J4 automotive repair, service, and towing, excluding bodywork, to permit automotive repair and service where they are not otherwise allowed at 263 South Main Street, Building 9, Units 3 and 4, in the urban transitional and opportunity corridor performance districts. This is not a development of regional impact. Is anyone here from Automotive Supply Associates to testify? Okay, come on up. That's good. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify, please, Mr. White?
My name is Jeff White. I'm the owner of Jeff Kell, Inc., which is basically in town here, is Gary Service Center on South Main Street.
Fill us in on why you believe a variance is appropriate here.
So, I've owned Gary Service Center, South Main Street, for about 17 years now. Then if you have been by the property in the last year or so, you'll notice that the property, you can't put another car on the property. It's always, always busy. You'll notice it's busy Monday through Friday. On Saturday, the parking lot's empty. We're not open Saturday and Sunday. And Monday, the parking lot's full again. So, that's kind of how business goes down at Gary's. Over the last few years, we've expanded into doing commercial fleet business. So, it's like plumber trucks, lift trucks, boom trucks, things like that, school bus repairs, and we're also a school bus inspection station, which there's very few of those in the state. Our facility at 323 South Main Street is just not big enough for the business that we do now, which is not just the volume of business, but also the type of business that we do. We have lifting capacities, lift trucks up to 20,000 pounds on a regular basis. So, we need to have special lifts, large industrial lifts, to do this kind of work. We're looking to move the business for, or separate that piece of business for a few years now. It's very difficult to find a location in Concord that will fit our requirements, will have bays that are tall enough, long enough, and have, frankly, cement floors that will take the lifts that we have to install in them, so that technicians can work on these vehicles safely. This 263 is off, 263 South Main Street, is the facilities is down behind the old Sennell's Auto Parts store. It's not on Main Road. It's tucked down behind where there's six other auto repair shops down there. So, that's the location, a location. A couple bays opened up. I went down. I rented the bays. I put about $200,000, $300,000, my own money, to buy new equipment, fixing the facility up, pouring some new cement floors. Then, to come find out, when I went to go to get my New Hampshire Inspection Station specifically for school buses, they came to me and told me that there was an issue with zoning in Concord for that particular location.
They mean the city?
The city contacted me. Well, they contacted, the DMV contacted the city. They went back and said to the DMV that there's an issue. The DMV called me and said, "We can't grant you an inspection license for school buses until..."
This resolved?
Yeah, this is resolved.
Got it, okay.
So, that's why I'm here at this point in time. You know, it's an industrial zone down there. I had no idea. There's six other shops down there that have been working, that have been there. Some are brand new. They've been in there for just one or two years. Others have been historically in there, probably for 10, 15, before my time. Interesting enough, Gary's, my place in 263, at 323 South Main Street, opened its doors originally at 263 South Main Street. So, we're returning to the same building. It's literally the same as, I've been told it's the same day. It's 30 something years ago. So, I employ three guys there, full-time, two of my new employees hired for this specific expansion of the business. And if I can't do this business there, I don't know where I can do it in Concord. I just, I've looked for years for a place to expand, and there's just really not a building that is feasible for me to expand into. I guess that's, you know, traffic-wise, it's probably, you know, if you look at South Main Street, and where Gary Service Center currently is, it's right across from McKinley Street. It's a very busy area. The traffic volume there is very heavy.
Where in the, among this complex of buildings are you?
Right about, oh, right about there. Yeah, we're not the last bay. The last two bays are it.
The last two bays in the south of that building?
Well, it's the last two bays in the south are my neighbors.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so I'd be the third and the fourth bay end. You have to see with that little white, that white, yeah, right, that's right in front of the two bays.
Right.
So, and then we also, when I lease those bays, because we want to have security for our fleet vehicles, sometimes they have, you know, these are plumbers' trucks, these are electricians, they have lots of equipment in their trucks. They leave it in the truck unlocked. So, if you could pan down further in the picture, even a little bit, yeah, you can see there is an impound area lot right there, no, just to the right of that, where that light tire is. So, that is all fenced in, in a lockable gate. So, we had that repaired. So, any overflow vehicle that I actually do have sitting there, instead of sitting out in the general population, which has historically been a fire issue, a fire zone issue because of customers, you know, it gets busy down there. So, we specifically have a second lease for that specific lot to keep this area clean. By splitting my business from 263 Main Street and the 323 Main Street, I'm probably going to bring 30 to 40 cars plus per day relief coming in that intersection of South Main and McKinley Street. So, that's going to really lighten up that traffic. It's going to move it closer to South Main, to 263 South Main Street. However, the vast majority of my deliveries for my vehicles that I'm working on are a walk up the hill, and no, nobody actually has to, delivery trucks don't have to come up and down South Main Street to come get, to come service me, because they're coming from the parking lot from Sennell's. That's where Sennell's warehouse.
So, you're continuing to operate both locations?
I need to operate both locations. So, the 323 South Main Street is an eight-bay shop. The new bay, the shop is a three-bay shop. So, we're just splitting them. And at 323 South Main, we're going to focus on what we historically did, which was domestic auto repair, European auto repair, you know, normal consumer vehicles as opposed to heavier vehicles in there. So, I think, you know, as the traffic flow would be, you know, on South Main Street, it's going to take some traffic flow away, because we won't have the delivery trucks running up and down South Main Street. If you can imagine, one repair could be four delivery trucks that come, just for one repair on a vehicle, depending on, you know, what we need for parts, whether, you know, however they may end up sourcing them out to us. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out. That will be eliminated, some of that, some of that will be eliminated, and a lot of it we move further down towards into the industrial zone, instead of being in the residential zone, which is where the 323 South Main is right now. So, I think for that, it's probably a good thing for the road itself. Moving down to 263 South Main Street, you know, we're not, it's a small shop in comparison to how big it is. We're not going to bring in more light pollution. There's going to be no more noise pollution than there is now down in that area. And I don't think there's really going to be much impact to the neighborhood for my current shop by moving that out, other than you won't see as many vehicles there. We don't really make a lot of noise, and we're not there on the weekends. We're not operating when people are there, you know, when our neighbors are at home. It's where normal business, I would say, to five. So, that's why I have to say about it.
There's such a mixed use of, tell us about some of your neighbors in that.
So, my, there's on, my immediate sides, I have a woodworking shop. I think he makes cabinets and things like that. On the other side is a company that wraps fleet vehicles. So, plumber's truck, they put the wrap on it. But in that long building, there are, there's three or four other repair shops that do domestic auto repair.
D and D Auto is that?
D and D is down there. There's a guy that just moved in from Hudson a couple, this last year. He does like old European, British Spitfires or MGs, things like that down there.
And staff, do you know, like, did they get a conditional use permit or just over the zoning line? How did that happen?
I, I...
Yeah, there's a mix of things with the uses there. Some are non-conforming. I believe one of them did receive a variance.
Oh, okay.
I don't recall.
We have, German Auto Works has ridden across the parking lot for me.
And there are some where there is a split zone there.
Yeah.
Who's your landlord? Who's that building?
Bobby Siegel. So, it's, I know it's Sennell's, but it's ASA or SAS.
I'm surprised when they, I'm sure you were in discussions with them, and you knew of this, but it's been a long time. I'm surprised nobody mentioned that you needed a variance until you just found out.
For the record, you forgot. I had no idea.
Especially after $200,000 of equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
I thought they would have mentioned.
I mean, my lease specifically says for specifically what I'm doing down there, you know. It specifically says auto repair, but not paint and body. It's, so it's very specific.
Sure.
What I can do in there.
Sure.
We have, we have another company in there that does oil undercoating spray. It's an environmentally safe kind of spray, but there's a company that does that. There's a sandblasting company down there. I think there's a car detailing company. There's a vending company in there. They fill vending machines down in that area.
I'm a little confused about the zoning districts here. Could you scroll down to the next map? There we go. I'm looking at that, and Emery, could you explain what we're seeing here?
Yeah.
It looks like we've got fruit salad.
So, these three buildings are in the urban commercial district.
Uh-huh.
And so, their uses are different.
Yeah.
This building, this building, and this building, all in the OCP. Why is the name just left me?
Oh.
Opportunity Corridor.
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
This is urban transitional. There aren't any buildings in this, just the entrance to the whole thing, is in the urban transitional.
Oh, that's all pretty straightforward.
The building, yeah. So, the building that he's in is in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District, and it doesn't allow that use. These buildings have different uses, but they also have more flexibility because it's in the urban commercial.
If you were standing down there, as I recall, it would all look like it was part of the same complex, correct?
Yeah. It, well, it does, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all owned by the same person, too.
You've walked by it many times, and...
Yeah, it's all by Siegel.
You would not know unless you looked at the zoning map and understood that, that the boundaries of the zones go with the building that's actually in that zone.
Right, got it.
And is the pink, pink urban transition, too?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is all urban transition.
Okay. So, where the brewery and the smokehouse restaurant all are?
In the paint.
That's all in there, in transition?
Yeah.
Okay.
The brewery and, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Up there, right, yeah.
Other friends.
So, it's mostly businesses in front of those buildings. It's mostly more businesses, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to pretend I understand. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Other than, this is going to be catastrophic for my business if this doesn't work.
That's a lot of pressure.
It's, it's, it's a huge, for me, it's a huge deal. So, I know, I know it's like that for everybody, but it's, there's going to be three people laid off, and I just, I can't move it back to where I currently am.
Understood. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the board? Thank you very much. Before we go any further, Nick pointed out to me that we have a six-member board here.
Yes.
Who's going to, who wants to sit in?
I'll take this one.
You'll take this one? Okay. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have a five-member board. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any other comments from code enforcement?
I have no further comments.
Very good. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I will invite discussion, starting with Mr. Warner.
Thank you. I think it's academic that why he's even here when there's already other repair facilities of a similar nature there. So, I'm obviously inclined to approve this.
All right. Mr. Waters?
Yeah, it's very surprising to learn that, I mean, that the whole thing is auto, is auto. And it's really geographically isolated, because you go down a pretty steep incline. You almost barely know it's there. So, it's really well-suited for this, because it's convenient for people who need their repairs done, but it also is not really an eyesore in the way. So, I'm ignoring the catastrophic consequences, because that's, I can't have any sympathy here, but I think on the merits that it qualifies.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I really, 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 really want to say yes, but I don't see the hardship. I don't know why they can't use it for permitted use.
Ms. Perkins?
I'm inclined to approve it. I think he's been put in a difficult situation with not enough information that should have been provided. That being said, I've been in and out of that location in the past, and I don't think it's a detriment. I think it will actually help his, the neighborhood where his other location is, which is more residential, have less congestion by putting it in the back here, which won't have an impact on the area around it. And whoever called it fruit salad for zoning was spot-on. So, I think it's fair to say that that provides a difficulty, especially since it is already there now. He's trying to, he's coming here to correct something that was overlooked.
Very good. I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues who are in favor of the appeal. The hardship, in my mind, is brought on by the rather bizarre configuration of the zoning boundaries, and the fact that the use that he wants to put it to is a minor variation on uses that are already there, either permitted or by grandfather. So, I would be inclined to support a motion to approve. Is there anyone who would care to make such a motion, or any motion?
I will. Will approve.
Would you want to give us a citation on all the good reasons?
Yeah.
Open up the staff memo.
Well, I think it's certainly not contrary to the public interest. It's, we're in dire need of more repair facilities. I think the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Certainly, it'll do substantial justice. Certainly won't diminish the value of surrounding properties. And I think the hardship is that there's already at least three, possibly four other existing repair facilities, and to deny a variance would be an injustice.
Very good. Is there a second?
And you want to adopt the applicant's findings as the board's findings?
Right, because I'm going to read all that. Oh, yeah, do you want me to read this?
No, you can just say, "I adopt the applicant's findings."
That's what I do.
Okay, I'm good with that.
No, we don't have 10 cases tonight.
Would anyone care to second that admirable motion?
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor, please say aye. Aye. Everyone opposed?
No.
It's four to one with Ms. Specter Morgan in the minority. The variance is granted. You can go on with your business.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
The next case this evening is case 0323. Nathaniel Niva, I hope I'm pronouncing that name correctly, requests approval for a variance from Section 2841E Maximum Lot Coverage, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit 14% lot coverage, where 10% is the maximum otherwise allowed, for construction of a shed at 53 Broad Cove Road in the open space, oh, Broad Cove Drive, excuse me, in the open space residential district, not a development of regional impact. Ms. Niva, are you here with us?
Here.
Please come forward.
How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Yeah, I swear you in. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify, please?
My name's Nathaniel Niva. I'm the owner of 53 Broad Cove Drive.
Would you fill us in on why you believe the variance should be granted based on that criteria for granting a variance?
So, just a little bit of backstory. I'm a first-time homeowner. I moved up to work at Concord Orthopedics. Me and my fiance just moved in a couple of months ago. The house is from the 1930s, and it's on a small plot of land. The issue that we have right now is storage. So, there is no basement. It's a wet crawl space, and it's dirt floor. There's no storage there, and there's no attic. The attic is where our bedroom is. Where the 53 is on there is actually a small second bedroom, which right now is just full of crates. Then, we have a small living room, a kitchenette, a small bathroom, and a small dining room. So, the plan for when we moved in was to, hey, we won't have any storage space, but we can just get a shed and use the shed for some storage space. And then I applied for a burning, a, not burning, a building permit, and you'd have to apply for a variance. And then I said, or I asked how much. And they said, "Well, you probably only need 1%," because I'm just trying to build a 10 by 16-foot shed or 160 square feet. But evidently, with the house in the driveway, it's already at 13%. So, as it is for 14%, I'm only asking for a 1% variance, just so I can build a shed.
Already noncompliant from the original property?
Correct. So, I didn't, we didn't know. So, they said, "Oh, if you ever want to do an addition or anything like that, that's, you'd have to apply for a variance," which I didn't. anything like that, that's, you'd have to apply for a variance," which I didn't, no. So this is a...
Wait, 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 are you saying that you applied for a couple of percentage extra in case you wanna build it, or you're saying you applied for exactly what you're, just enough to build a shed?
So, from what I have been told, I'm at 13%, I'm just applying for a 1% variance to 14%, just so I can build a shed. I think this is gonna be a cleaner solution, I was actually talking to some of my neighbors, and they said, "You don't need to go to town hall or do any of that, you buy a trailer, you bury the trailer, you build a shed on the trailer." I said, "I'd rather just..."
We appreciate that you came here instead.
So, there's a lot of tarps in my neighborhood, the shed's gonna be built by a company that's not me, it's gonna be paint matched to the house, I'm just trying to...
And you've got, looks like maybe a large piece of land or conservation behind you?
So, I believe it's owned by a neighbor way over yonder, they own 63 acres.
And then the river across the street?
Yep, the river across the street, at 61, that is Grady and his wife, and then over, and the other one is Mark and Lisa. They're both very nice, I don't, I don't think it would be a problem, but again, that's me, and it's for you to decide, but that's my case.
Well, considering they told you it's even home, that was okay anyway.
I feel kinda hurt. Could you tell me what the dimensions of the shed are? I see the plan here, but...
Ten by sixteen.
Ten by sixteen. And is that drawn more or less to scale on your map, or is that...
Can I point?
Yeah, 'cause it looks, it looks out of scale to me, but I may be just...
So I had a lot of difficulty trying to navigate this website. What I'm trying to do, and I measured it out, is it would go right here, it would end up being about 70 to 75 feet away from the road, and about 10 feet away from my neighbor's property.
Got it.
And what's the side setback in that area?
Meaning what, what exists here?
Yeah.
This is kind of like a gully, no man's way sort of thing.
They don't have the edicts, it's so small. Oh, okay.
So, neither...
Just put a shed, that's why I had my permit.
Yeah, that space in between is kind of a rut, so you can't physically build anything there, so it's kind of the separation between...
It's kinda, I mean, just eyeballing it, it's, so you just have, right now you just have the driveway in the house, that's the only, is the, the driveway's coming in, I, yeah, I guess that's...
If you look at the, the picture version, you can see the driveway better.
The, the application.
Oh, oh, it's on the application, yeah.
Yeah, so right where...
Oh, your driveway, it comes in from there, so you have a really long driveway, that explains it.
So, I would be putting the shed...
And the lot isn't that big.
Yeah.
Right, 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 yeah, for that, for that zone, yeah.
Here.
Sure.
On the other side of the driveway, yeah.
Yeah, that explains it. I wonder why they didn't, when they built it, developed it, I wonder why the driveway's coming in all the way from out there instead of a shorter driveway?
Who knows?
Oh, you mean closer to the house?
Yeah, just to save our...
What was the age on the house again?
Ballpark, 1930s.
Yeah, so it probably predates the zoning requirements to be at 10%.
It does, yeah.
I wonder why they built an extra long driveway?
That's why it's already a known block, yeah. Makes sense, we've seen that before.
Are there other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know? Very good, thank you very much.
It was nice to meet you all, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Nope.
Very good, with that, close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
It's Mark on the case.
You're on this one, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping me on the straight and narrow here.
Been absent for quite a while.
Yeah, I got out of shape. Very good, the six-member board, once again, is a five-member board. With that, declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I invite discussion from the board. Start this one with Ms. Specter Morgan.
Oh, good, it's an easy one. I don't have any issue with it, it is not going to be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance or the public interest, because it is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, all of the surrounding lots have sheds. There is no gain to the public from denying this, given that the property is already non-conforming, and this is adding a 1% of lot coverage, whereas the loss to the owner would be substantial. It is not going to diminish surrounding property values, given that it is a teeny tiny little shed, and the lot is unique, because it is particularly small for the district compared to the surrounding properties, and it does have a really big driveway for such a small lot and a small house, so I don't have any issue with granting this variance.
Is there a second? Wait a minute, we have...
She does that so well.
Mr. Davie, how do you see this?
Nothing to add, except I wouldn't be shocked if Lot 45 next door was also non-conforming, just to add to that, so...
Mr. Watters?
I agree.
Mr. Warner?
Ditto.
I also agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion? I think one's more or less already been made.
I approve it for the reasons previously stated, and I adopt the findings proposed by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. That takes us down to case 0324.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. They'll let me eat dinner tonight.
I knew there were benefits to public service. Do a man that favor, you've done a lot. Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests requests approval for a variance from section 2833E buffer requirements in the SP district to permit permanent disturbance of shoreline protection buffer for the installation of a trail where such disturbance is not otherwise allowed at 52-54 Portsmouth Street in the open space residential district. Development of a regional, is, this is a district, is it or is it not, development of regional impact?
It's, it is because of its proximity to the water.
Okay. Oh, was there any regional notification done?
Yes.
Okay.
Really?
Yep.
Who, when it's, so who gets it?
The Central...
The Regional Planning Commission.
Oh, oh, it doesn't go to every, every locality, just the commission?
No, it only goes to the locality if, if it's adjacent to that locality and it's one of them, but if it's, if it's not, then it goes to the regional commission.
Oh, and if they wanted to, they could write something or comment?
Yep, and they write a no comment.
Yep, thank you.
Can I ask one other preliminary question? Did the Conservation Commission see this?
They, gosh, we've had so many. Let me look.
Okay, thanks.
In the meantime, whoever is going to join us for the society, please come forward.
That's it.
Tell the truth, and nothing but.
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify?
I am Dylan Summers, representing the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests.
D-I-L-L-O-N or...
Y-L-A-N. Summers, like the season, but plural.
I'm winter, so you're more popular.
Way more popular.
I'm glad for that.
I'd also like to, while we're ready, hand out, this is a sort of slightly updated version of the site plan, it represents a little bit more accurately what we'll actually be building, based on the dimensions of, based on some dimensional requirements for, to meet accessible standards that I missed, and just sort of a less hasty version.
Which of our alternates gets this one? Brenda, you gonna go for this one?
It's like, give it to her.
Yeah, that's fine.
They did not, but there's certainly no reason why we can't have them weigh in next week.
I have an extra photo here, is there? Anybody else need some paperwork? Okay, please proceed.
Great, thank you very much. So, our overall project is upgrading a portion of our trail system at the Merrimack River Outdoor Education Conservation Area, also called the Floodplain for the short version, to be a accessible all-person's trail, one that is fully accessible to people with, in wheelchairs and with other mobility disabilities. The overall project will upgrade roughly a quarter mile the trail to meet accessible trail standards running from the parking lot on Portsmouth Street to an open viewpoint near the banks of the Merrimack River. We are utilizing federal design standards for accessible trails to ensure that we're meeting the highest standard for accessibility. Almost all of the trail upgrades will occur within the existing trail line, creating no additional disturbance to wetland or shoreline buffers in the area, which we, in our conversations with Anne Marie Skinner at the city planning office, we determined where, was acceptable, that we did not need any additional permits. At the end of the trail, where it comes out into an open meadow with views of the Merrimack River, we're asking for a variance to create a small addition to the existing trail that would create a turnaround loop for mobility devices and space for two accessible benches. This would create an area in which all trail users would have the space to sit and rest and enjoy the scenic qualities of the Merrimack River before heading back to the beginning of the trail. To create this area within a clear view of the river will require an additional disturbance of roughly 255 square feet inside the 75-foot natural vegetative buffer that is outlined in Article 2833D Section E. The conditional use permits to create a new disturbance of the buffer are only allowed for some, a few very specific uses that a trail addition does not qualify for, so we are requesting of the variance for Section E of Article 2833 to create no more than 255 square feet of disturbance inside the vegetative buffer. The design of the proposed trail addition continues to maintain a 50-foot buffer to the Merrimack River, which, when combined with the gentle topography of the site, will prevent runoff from the new trail from reaching the river. That, when combined with the approach of erosion control for, during construction and the small scale of the impacted area, should minimize any impact that the new trail will have on the water quality or other factors for the Merrimack River, guaranteeing that the spirit of the shoreline protection ordinance is observed and meeting statutory requirements one and two. The intention of the project is to benefit the public by making the, our trail more accessible for people who often face significant barriers to accessing nature due to a lack of appropriate infrastructure. Besides paved paths at city parks, the only other accessible trail in Concord, New Hampshire, is the New Hampshire Adipons McLean Center Trail, and our trail would provide a very different experience than all of those other accessible natural areas, significantly expanding the options for people with disabilities to access natural spaces in the Concord area. Our trail is close by to Havenwood Heritage Heights, a retirement community whose residents would, could break, benefit greatly from a nearby accessible trail. In addition, the Concord Elementary School utilizes this trail for science field trips, typically bringing 150 to 200 students a year, and the accessible upgrades will make it easier for children with disabilities to participate in those field trips. So we feel that substantial justice will be served by the granting of the variance, because the benefit to public, to the public of increased access for people with disabilities greatly outweighs the minimal impact a small trail addition would have on the shoreline buffer, meeting requirement number three. Now, direct impact to our surrounding property, to any surrounding property should be relatively nonexistent, as the section of trail is well away from abutting properties and on the interior of our large lot. The granting of the variance is consistent with the existing use of the property as a recreational area, and is not expected to produce a significant surge in visitation that would overwhelm the existing parking area or traffic on, in the neighborhood. So, we should be okay on requirement number four. Little enforcement of the ordinance would place unnecessary hardship on the shoulders of those people with mobility challenges that rely on accessible trail infrastructure. Our property is exceptional for the area in which it's situated, it's situated as conservation, as conservation land that is open to the public in perpetuity. If our accessible trail was to be built in the existing trail corridor, as allowed under the ordinance, it would make maneuvering wheelchairs and mobility devices awkward and challenging, and would limit access to benches and resting areas in spots that have destination views of the river, would be much more limited. So to develop an accessible trail that creates a substantially more difficult and less rewarding experience for people who need the infrastructure compared to more able-bodied people would be an unnecessary hardship on those folks, meeting the requirement number five. And we believe that the proposed variance, with the design keeping it away from the river and making sure that we're minimizing our impact, represents the best balance between that reasonable use for people with disabilities and the needs of the ordinance, and we hope you agree.
Questions from the board?
Just a quick one for clarification, obviously, it's a very irregular lot, which probably makes it a bit of a hardship, but it happens to be technically in my backyard, so I know quite a bit of it's sloped as well, so finding just the right place for the path would mean being best to stay where you're planning, correct?
Correct, yes, we...
The land itself has, does come with a hardship as well, because of the slope of it.
Absolutely. We, there's a significant bluff in a large portion of the lot, that then tapers down into the lower, lowlands along the edge of the Merrimack River. Our existing trail system, I included it as part, as part of the application package and overview that shows our existing trail system, and that takes up a significant portion of the lower area along the floodplain, along the Merrimack, though technically, not all of it is a floodplain, but we refer to it as that, and it is the lowlands near the Merrimack. So, so this trail sort of skirts between that steep area and the areas that are wetlands and regularly flood, and kind of occupies that high ground that keeps it in an appropriate place.
Other questions? I probably should know this, but tell me a little about your organization, what's your, sort of the extent of your holdings, and what's your mission?
Absolutely, so the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests has, was founded in 1901 with a mission of, like, protecting and conserving land across New Hampshire. This, we've, our mission has changed in form to include direct conservation, where we own land and fee, and we own 200 properties across the state of New Hampshire, along with, I can't remember, but about, probably about 700 conservation easements that we hold on private land across the state. So I don't remember all the numbers, but it's about 66,000 acres that we own across the state of New Hampshire. And so, we, you know, you might know the numbers better, but we...
It's got it.
Okay. This particular property has been owned by the Forest Society since the 70s. Our offices sit on the bluff above this conservation area, so if you see on the, in the satellite photo, if you scroll up in the satellite photo a little bit, you can see the buildings up on high ground on the top of all those topo lines, that's our organization's offices. So this is a major conservation area with several miles of trail below, that sit below our office, and you can see that there's a parking area on Portsmouth Street, and the blue line represents the trail that will be upgraded, with the small section at the end in red is what's detailed on the site plan.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here?
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry, please come forward. Well, as forward as far as you can, can we get a mic down there?
She has one, yeah. She's got one.
Kylie provided me with a mic.
Well done. You swear to tell the truth, and nothing but. May we have your name, please? May we have your name, please?
My name is Janet Zeller, I live at 149 East Side Drive here in Concord. And I've been on the trail in the Merrimack River Outdoor Education and Conservation Area, and that trail is currently a challenge. You are dodging rocks and roots all the way along. That trail surface needs to be improved. We see the Forest Society's plan, and it would take care of that surfacing while doing so within the footprint of the existing trail and without changing the natural setting of the trail. Also needed is what we're talking about here, and that's an area by the river at the end of that first section of trail. An area that would have a firm and stable surface, so those of us who use wheelchairs or mobility devices, as well as all other hikers, will have a spot where they can pause to enjoy the river view without negatively impacting the riverbank. The firm and stable surface of that space will also facilitate the turning of wheelchairs and other mobility devices without negatively impacting the surface as folks return to the trailhead. That work by the river would serve a real public benefit, which I believe outweighs the very small disturbance within that shoreline buffer. I very much support this work, it's much needed, and I would ask that the board grant the variance requested by the Forest Society. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Please come forward.
Oh, come here.
Swear to tell the truth, then, nothing but.
Yes, my name is Sam Boduck, I live at 147 School Street, right here in the fair city of Concord. I come with three perspectives. First off, as a relatively new resident of Concord, my girlfriend and I bought a house just four months ago. The second perspective is as a current seasonal employee, trail steward for the Forest Society, and having worked on the Flood Plane that Dylan mentioned. And the third perspective is as the uncle of two children with mobility disabilities who grapple with the daily life of inaccessibility, in anywhere from attending school to having fun with their friends to getting outside, which Darby most recently released a study on getting outside as one of the most effective things you can do to improve your mood and outlook on any given day. And from those three perspectives, and especially the perspective of working on the trail at least once a month, sometimes once a week throughout the summer, I've seen the ability and the, the light that comes to people when they step out on the Flood Plane and see what's out there. And I would just like to encourage you all to approve this variance request so that we can open up that ability to get that light, so to speak, to all manner of folks with all manners of mobility abilities.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comment from the enforcement?
Number one.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I will invite Ms. Perkins to start the discussion.
Just kidding. No, I think there's a lot of hardship that comes with that land. I don't know it well directly, but I know it well being a neighbor to it, and I absolutely would want to approve this to make it more accessible to those with mobility challenges, which sometimes includes myself.
Ms. Specter-Moore?
I think expanding these trails, this minimal amount within the buffer is not going to be contrary to the public interest or spirit of the ordinance, certainly not going to harm the public health, safety, or welfare. I don't see any benefit to the city from denying the variance, and I do see detriment to both the property owner and the public from denying, from grant, yeah. There's going to be no diminution in property values, and I do see the hardship where the trails currently exist, and we don't want to cut new trails, we want to stay within the existing trails. So, yes, I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Mr. Witters?
It's interesting, because the, you know, the purpose of the ordinance is for conservation purposes, but in a way, by allowing a minimal violation to it, it's improving general conservation because it's allowing the appreciation to be expanded to a, you know, a greater group of people who may otherwise be able to enjoy it, which by enhancing that appreciation, it tends to improve conservation because it makes people appreciate it more. So, and I also think, you know, I think I give a lot of deference to this particular group because they're not, they're obviously not trying to develop something for profit, not the way of anything against developers, but they're obviously, their entire mission is conservation, so if they feel that the benefits greatly outweigh, I mean, we'd be hard pressed to disagree with them.
Mr. Waller?
I have no additional comments.
I agree with what my colleagues have said. We have also, the board has also in the past considered inaccessibility itself to be evidence of a, physical characteristics of a site, creating inaccessibility to be evidence of a hardship justifying a variance. So, I think in this case, you can make that argument along with all the other ones that have been made. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would move to approve the variance for the reasons cited by the board, and I would also move to adopt the findings as proposed by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. The next item on the agenda is one that is going to need some explanation from Anne Marie, I think, because it has some, do something like --
Yeah, did we forget to do something?
I wasn't here for it.
Last week, last month?
Yes, so, and it was my fault for not reminding you, so I --
We just, no problem.
You made the motion and we were seconded to approve --
I was chair, so I didn't second it.
Someone seconded it.
Must have been Mr. Monahan.
Jim.
It was Jimmy seconded it, even though he voted against it? Okay.
Oh, that's right, I remember, he said, he said, "I seconded it for the purpose of getting a vote."
Of getting it, okay. Okay. So, and it was for the setbacks, to approve the setbacks.
This was the, right.
32 Federal Street.
They want to build where the, in the --
A duplex.
Right, in the parking lot, right.
Triplex.
Yeah, so you made the motion to approve it, and you and Mr. Wallner voted in favor of that motion, Mr. Monahan voted against it.
Mm-hmm.
So, because there was only three, you have to have three for it to, for the motion to pass, so the motion failed. But it was a motion to approve. So, the motion to approve failed, so we then needed a motion to deny.
I think something was a little out of order, but I couldn't quite put my finger on it.
Yeah, so, so the case essentially is still open.
It's still open, because no, no motion, right.
Yeah. So, I spoke with the acting city solicitor about it, and this, I spoke with him, like, right after, the day after the meeting, and he said, "Come back, do some findings with the same three people," which, of course, Mr. Monahan's not here tonight, so we cannot do that, but that's why it's on the agenda, because I didn't know that he wasn't going to be here. So, he said, you know, "We need a motion and findings of why it's denied." So, that was the original intent of the item on the motion. Since then, they, the property owner, has requested a rehearing. They submitted a request for rehearing on both the variance applications. And so, I called Mr. Conforti once again, just this afternoon, right before this meeting, to update him on the situation, and he said, because, because the motion to approve failed, so it's technically still open, the cleanest way to resolve it would be to have the rehearing for that one. So --
Whoa, okay, sorry, keep going.
So, the request for the rehearing for that one will be next month.
I would agree with that, that that would be the cleanest way to deal with it.
And the owner does actually reference the fact that something from New Hampshire Constitution and his rights, because of the way it was handled, on that particular one.
Yeah.
Anyway, according to Mr. Conforti, the cleanest way is to have, grant the rehearing for that one. The other one, how, your normal procedure for, you know, for assessing whether or not it meets the burden for a rehearing.
Well, one of the criteria for granting a rehearing is an error in procedure.
But that, is that that motion in front of us right now?
No.
Right, so they're going to be filing one?
They already did.
Yeah.
They filed it today.
Okay.
So, it'll be in November meeting, because the request is not the hearing, the request is just the request for the hearing. So, the request will be in November, and then provided you grant request, then the rehearing would be in December. And again, there's two different variances, so there'll be two different items on the agenda.
Can you remind me what they were? One was a setback and one was a, was a block coverage?
Block coverage and frontage.
Frontage, okay.
So, we'll get revisited in --
Yes.
So, no action on that item, agenda item right now?
Correct, no action.
Very good. There were some minutes, I believe.
Yes, there are minutes.
Where are we? September 3rd minutes and the August 6th minutes. What happened to the August 6th minutes? We just never --
We didn't have enough people who'd been there to approve them.
All right.
So, I --
I voted on August 6th, but not September 3rd.
I moved to approve, actually, was I here on August?
You know who was here on August 6th?
I guess I shouldn't start to approve.
Oh, my goodness, well, because Mr. Monahan is not here, we can't, can't vote on September 3rd.
This is starting to become like an SAT type of question.
That's what happens, yeah, so you can vote on, you can vote on August 6th, and on September 3rd, you'll have to vote on --
Hold on, let me, let me pull up the, or one of those weird things in the law boards where there's, what time is it in Japan?
Yeah, right.
LSAT question.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, then, September 3rd is going to have to hold. How about August 6th?
I think most of us were here on August 6th.
Well, September 3rd, we can vote, because Andrew and I, but you have to have three, we have to have three to approve the minutes, if there's only three of us.
There's actually no requirement in the law that you approve the minutes, so.
Oh.
It's more of a formality, yeah. I don't know what the rules of procedure say.
Right.
I'd wait till next month.
How about August 6th? Don't we love it? Who was, who was there?
I think all of us were.
I was not.
I know I was, I think, maybe I had missed a meeting on August.
You were at August 6th, I think, I just. Hold on, let me look it up.
Yeah, I think I was.
Give me a second, I'll find it.
Yeah. I missed last month, and I'm going to miss next month, so hopefully if they need an alternate year, I can.
Hold on.
I have an event that night, so.
Minutes.
Oh, darn.
August 6th draft. Chris, myself, Mark, Andrew, and Brenda were here.
All right. Somebody care to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved to approve the August 6th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We love the August 6th minutes, we're indifferent to the September 3rd.
So, now tell them the good news about the next, next month's meeting. You're not going to be here. I'm not going to be here, again.
And Brenda won't be here?
And I won't be here.
You won't?
And you won't be here.
I won't be here.
You won't be here.
But we'll, 1, 2, 3, 4.
As far as I know, I'll be here.
Hopefully, Jim.
How's the agenda look for next month?
It's a, you know, there's a couple of signs, sign variances, there's the Walter Dratner continued the two, he withdrew the parking.
Can we, um?
Can we, can we move to adjourn?
Yeah.
Adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.